All this meeting of the Moberly City Council are ordered, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If the clerk would do the roll call, please.
Lucas?
Here.
Kimmons?
Here.
Kaiser?
Here.
McEwen?
Here.
Graff?
Here.
Thank you. You should, everyone should have seen the agenda by now. Any changes or corrections to tonight's agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the agenda has been approved. Also, in your packets, you should have received a copy of the minutes from last, from the last city council meeting for June 3rd, 2024. Any changes or corrections to the minutes from that meeting? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We had a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the minutes have been approved. Recognition of visitors, Mr. Bogowski.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, tonight we are joined by Mr. Ted Sander, who will come to speak to you on Agenda Item Number Three, the annual report for room at the inn.
Very good. Thank you. I'd also like to mention if there's anyone that would like to speak to the council, please come up and grab one of the green cards, fill out your name and address and contact information, and you'll have four minutes to speak to the council when the time is right. We'll call you up a little bit later on in the meeting. Communication requests and informational items, number two, a request to hold the 2024 Moberly Homecoming Parade on October 4th, 2024. Mr. Bogowski.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, received a request for the Moberly Homecoming Parade on October 4th. This is the annual homecoming parade, and it is the same route as before. They expect 70 entries. PD has reviewed this, and we're recommending adoption today.
Very good. Anyone on the council have any questions or discussion regarding the 2024 Homecoming Parade? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve as listed?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It has been approved. Number three, 2024 Annual Report for Room at the Inn. Mr. Sander, I understand that you have a little report that you'd like to share with us.
Uh, I believe, sir, you have the, uh, already got the written part.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm assuming... There you go. Assuming everybody's read it, so I'm prepared to answer questions. I don't really have anything necessarily to expound on unless you have questions you want answered.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Sander regarding room at the inn? No? Looks like it was a relatively good year.
It, it was a very easy year, yes.
Mm-hmm.
As you know, the weather determines everything that we do, and this was a year in which the weather wasn't so severe as to require a lot of our services, so.
Sure, sure.
So.
The, at the end of your, your report, I know you had listed, you know, why does some of the individuals that could come not come, and you had listed, you know, the, the comment about not liking being told what to do.
Right.
Are they, what did you mean by that? I, I didn't know how to interpret that.
I, I can only interpret what the gentleman, what I thought the gentleman meant when he said that. And, uh, I think it means just what it says. Some people don't like being told what to do, and we're not asking them to do very much when they come in. We ask them to give up their belongings that they bring with them. They're locked away at night. They're not allowed to go out, and they're not allowed to smoke except for one, one cigarette per night, and we go out with them during that time. And other than that, there just aren't very many rules. I mean, be civil to everybody else, and, and that's, that's about the extent of the rules. But some people don't even like those minimal rules, so.
Very good.
That's the only way I can interpret what he said.
I think that makes perfect sense. I think that makes perfect sense. Any additional questions for Mr. Sander while he is here? Okay, sir. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for the service that you guys provide. I know that-
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Ministerial Alliance, which is our sponsor, we, we appreciate the cooperation of the city and the police department.
If there's anything else that we can do, please let us know.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. As with most evenings, we do have a consent agenda this evening. Is there any of the items in the consent agenda that any of the council members would like to have removed for further discussion? Nope. Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to read, for the reading of the consent agenda.
So moved.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second? All those in favor for the reading of the consent agenda signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please read the consent agenda.
Bill Number R 1652, a resolution approving grant funding to area civic and charitable organizations and authorizing the city manager to execute annual service agreements with area civic and charitable organizations. Bill Number R 1653, a resolution of the City of Moberly, Missouri, appointing directors of the Moberly Crossings Community Improvement District. Bill Number R 1654, a resolution adopting the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the granting of a conditional use permit to the Redeemer Church Moberly Incorporated for temporary church use. Bill Number R 1655, a resolution accepting the proposal and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Ozark Fire Sprinkler Company Incorporated for the fire sprinkler protection system as part of the Omar Inn Bradley Airport Terminal remodeling project. Bill Number R 1656, a resolution authorizing and accepting a change order to Phase One of the Quanis Park Project with Rad A Baker Construction LLC. And Bill Number R 1657, a resolution of the City of Moberly, Missouri, approving an underground electric easement for Union Electric Company doing business as Ameren, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the easement instrument on behalf of the city.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion regarding any of the items in the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second. All those in favor of the approval of tonight's consent agendas, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Tonight's consent agenda has been approved. Thank you. Ordinances and resolutions, number 10, an ordinance, Mr. Kaiser.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance approving and accepting the replating of Lot 5 of the Carl Haynes subdivision, and Lot 5 and Lot 5A has to be read twice for consideration.
We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of, of the reading of the ordinance signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance approving and accepting the replating of Lot 5 of the Carl Haynes subdivision into Lot 5, 5 and 5A.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this particular ordinance? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance approving and accepting the replating of Lot 5 of the Carl Haynes subdivision into Lot 5 and Lot 5A.
Last chance for discussion on this ordinance. Hearing none, have a motion to approve the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
The ordinance has passed. Number 11, an ordinance.
Mayor, I have an ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for easement acquisition with Jacob and Caitlin Strain, and I ask that it be read twice for consideration and passage.
We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor for the reading of the ordinance signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for easement acquisition with Jacob and Caitlin Strain.
Any further discussion regarding the ordinance? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for easement acquisition with Jacob and Caitlin Strain.
Last chance for discussion regarding the ordinance. Hearing none, we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance.
So moved.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
The ordinance has passed. Number 12, a resolution, Mr. Kimmons.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the City of Moberly, Missouri, to pay expenses due between May 31st of 2024 and June 13th of 2024 in the amount of $1,117,367.54. Has to be read once for consideration of passage.
We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Is there a second?
Yes.
We have a second. All, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first and only reading.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the City of Moberly, Missouri, to pay expenses due between May 31st, 2024, and June 13th, 2024 in the amount of $1,117,367.54.
Thank you. I hereby certify that there is sufficient money standing to the credit of the city in Moberly, Missouri, unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of the resolution. City Treasurer Matthew P. Douglas. Any further discussion regarding the resolution? Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution has passed. Okay, moving right along. Number 13, Department Head Monthly Reports. Um, we'll just start with Mr. Kaiser. You go right ahead, sir.
All right. Uh, Tom, regarding the downtown parking study, uh, it's my understanding that a letter went out to the business owners along, uh, Fourth and Coates, along Coates Street there, and that, do I understand that we're gonna have some, um, parallel parking on the south side of Coates Street?
That's correct. That's what they designated it as. You get, that's the only way they're gonna get the clearance. You couldn't do enough angle to get the clearance that you all were looking for.
Um, you, you said in here that you're not aware of any opposition. I do know that I've been approached, I think others have been approached by Coates Street Grill, that they're, you're losing a number of spots on that south side, and they've got a lot of elderly people that park there. And, uh, so I would request that you go and talk to Brandy because they are definitely in opposition.
Like I said, so I'd be happy to meet with them. They haven't contacted us, is what I was saying.
They contacted, uh, Mayor and myself as well, and I think that's what they thought was enough, so.
Well, I, I'm working on some ways that might improve that, and so I have met with the adjacent property owner who has a approach that takes up several spaces, and we're talking about some ways to maybe revise that to would allow for maybe a couple more spaces. But I mean, due to the setback requirements, the 20-foot from the stop bars and the 30-foot from the stop sign, even if we didn't left them parallel, you'd still have the congestion and you'd lose some spaces.
Okay, well, like I said, if you could do me a favor and go and talk to Brandy.
I'd have to talk to them.
Yeah, great.
They had, like I said, they hadn't reached out to us.
Right. I, I know that, I talked to her today, and she had said she had talked to a couple others. Um, the second thing I have is, is, uh, I think it was Monday night, we had a big break on, uh, Concanon Street, on the curves there, um, Sean, and I just wanted to commend your guys. I happened to come around and, uh, the corner and see a ton of water, and knew something was up, and it was bubbling really good. Uh, I stuck around till you guys showed up, but also talked to a lot of the, the neighbors in the area and tried to explain stuff to them. But I just wanted to thank you guys for getting there, and they had some real challenges with that one. That was a big one. So I just wanted to compliment that.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Anybody else have any other questions for the department heads? I actually had a, a two. One was kind of, kind of a negative, and one's, another one's a positive, but, uh, Tom, can you elaborate a little bit on the, the misfueling that happened at the, at the airport? What, what exactly, how's that take place, and how do we keep that from happening?
So the, uh, the plane came in and arrived, and this is just, I, I had to, employees write up a report, but what happened is they parked the plane on the tarmac, and when they came in and approached a, off guy on duty, you know, they asked, yeah, what do you want fuel out of the truck or the tank, rather than what kind of fuel do you want? And that's the first thing that we need to establish. And so the owner of the plane said the truck, because he'd already parked the plane. They didn't want him to start it up and move it over the pumps, and so it was a twin engine, you know, I guess, you know, it, you could have a turboprop, you could, you know, but clearly said it was a 1968 model plane, so it still had the large enough nozzles to allow the duct buil- build nozzle, which is for Jet A to fit down in that tank, which newer planes won't. Uh, and so he went out there and trying to make the guy happy, and the guy was staying there. He thought he was doing what he was supposed to, but he just, there were several things we should have done differently. We should have asked, what type of fuel do you want? And have them state that, and so that's, we're working at, at least a verbal thing, a hundred percent verbal. I want Jet A, or I want 100 low lead, and then you can talk about what type of arrangements we can make for fuel in it. That's one thing we're gonna do, and then the, uh, it also, on the wing, it's right above the tank, it said 100 low lead, so should have identified that. So there was some, it was just a miscommunication right there. We should have done better, and we've got some measures in place to prevent that from happening in the future.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of my question, is the, mistakes obviously do happen, and that's just life, but are there certain processes that we could potentially put in place that could prevent that, you know, from, from happening again? I mean, it could have, it could have been a lot worse than what it was.
We're gonna do verbal at a minimum, but I'm looking around at other airports to see if they have, maybe go as far, if I, some pilots will find it irritating, but have them check the box, you know, basically, on what kind of fuel they want to have something on record.
Sure. Very good. Thank you very much. And next question I had was, was actually for Troy, and it was not particularly a question, but I've got a lot of people that have just been asking regarding the amphitheater and, and just kind of the, the, the plan and, and when and that kind of thing. Could you kind of just fill us in, um, just date-wise, and, and are you starting to line things up for it, et cetera, et cetera?
Sure. So June 27th at 4:00 PM is the ribbon cutting, so that's right around the corner. Um, then our first event is the, um, All About Birds, is essentially similar to the Ealdays program, um, that the World Bird Sanctuary puts on. That's our first event, which is July 12th, uh, to kick things off. So, uh, our department will largely do conservation-oriented programming, but then we'll work, uh, with other organizations, eliminate, uh, reduce or eliminate, uh, fees and red tape to bring other organizations from our council and library, and the library's working on one for this fall, uh, and we're working with community, the community band as well, but we're trying to bring other, um, organizations to help program it, simply because programming is a full-time job.
Sure.
So, uh, but essentially, that's the ribbon cutting date, and what we plan for it in terms of direct programming is conservation-oriented.
Basically, we're, we're ready to rock and roll, is kind of what you're, what you're saying.
Correct. Yeah, it is finished.
Cool. I look forward to that. That, that should be real nice. Um, yes, Mr. Kimmons, you go right ahead.
Would there be an opportunity or interest on their part to have the, uh, high school, maybe bands or choirs or something come out and experience, uh, putting a concert on in the park like that?
I can certainly reach out to them and, and see if they're another interested party. They're not one I've reached out to, uh, thus far, but I can certainly do that.
Just, you know, thought it'd be something fun to do.
And for those familiar with some of the areas down south of Columbia, Cooper's Landing, other places, uh, that's something for 2025 that, uh, I think would provide a good, uh, template for us. Uh, it brings in a good crowd. You can have food vendors, things of that nature, at a relatively low cost.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? I know, one thing that we don't normally do is, is give the department heads an opportunity. If there's something that you think that we should know that we've not talked about, uh, anything that anybody wants to bring up and, and, and talk to us? All right. That's all right. We'll let it slide this time. Um, okay, so moving on. If we don't have anything else, uh, we've got consideration for approval of renewal of liquor license, licenses.
Mayor and council, the following businesses have submitted renewal liquor applications: Bean of Moberly, Boozy Badger Bar and Grill, Casin Keg, Diablo Lingo, Felicia's, Fiesta Bar and Grill, Fraternal Order of Eagles, Vertigo Event Services, and the VFW Post 2654. And then after posting the agenda, we received approval for West Side Bar and Grill. And then finally, Mallard Pub and Pool is under new ownership, and the new owner, Cody Smith, has applied for a new license. These have all gone through the necessary departments, and we recommend approval of the licenses.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion or questions regarding the renewal of the liquor licenses? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Liquor licenses have been approved. Hang on, just, I lost my place. Okay, next on the list is proposals for the Tourism Advisory Council. Uh, does anybody want to take this, or you want me to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two proposals from our Tourism Commission, uh, to sponsor two events in town. One is the Phobia Film Festival, and one is the Omar Bradley Museum 80th Anniversary D-Day event. So these have gone through Tourism, and they are recommending that we sponsor each event for a thousand dollars.
Would you, do you need approval on these individually?
No.
Due to the-
We can take them together.
Okay, okay. Okay. Any questions, any discussion regarding the proposals for the Tourism Commission funding? Nope. We have a motion for the approval of the tourism funding.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any abstentions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I abstained from this vote.
Very good. Uh, it looks like the funding has passed, so we can notify those folks that, uh, they can spend that for their marketing. We've come to the part of the meeting, uh, for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this time? Kind of quiet tonight. Uh, with no public comment, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, adjourn the meeting to a work session followed by a closed session to discuss the status of negotiated contract matters.
So moved.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming to tonight's city council meeting. We'll move right into the work session portion of the meeting tonight. Uh, we've got a pretty good laundry list of things, so we'll just start with, number one, a resolution approving and authorizing an agreement for services with the Moberly Area Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Bogowski.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, what you have in front of you is a renewal with our agreement with Moberly Area Economic Development Corporation. Um, so what's shown here is a, uh, annual renewal with two, uh, options after that, so it fixes our costs over time for the three years. Um, so it is at a, uh, a, a flat renewal rate for them, so. Uh, we've been partnered up with this entity since about 1988, so quite a good long time for us.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any questions, uh, from the council or any additional discussion regarding this agreement? Hearing none, is there any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we'll move that forward to the next council meeting. Number two, a resolution approving a government consulting services agreement between the City of Moberly, Missouri, and Zampkus and Associates LLC, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an arrangement with our government, uh, services consultant. Uh, this is an annual agreement for us. Uh, this is another flat agreement, same cost as last year. Uh, he's been very helpful to us to get our message out in Jefferson City and also help us hear what's going on. So when we, uh, have questions about whether a bill is gonna pass or not, he's often our eyes and ears on the ground, who can kind of give us some insights, and also tell us what these bills really mean to us here in Moberly. So it's been a very valuable service at a pretty affordable rate for us, so.
Okay. Any questions or discussion regarding number two? Any objections to moving that forward to the next council meeting? Hearing none, we will move it forward. Number three, a proposal for the Tourism Advisory Commission.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a, uh, proposal from the Tourism Commission to sponsor the Moberly Railroad Days event, uh, with the Rotary Club. Um, as you know, this happened last week, so it's a little retroactive. There was some miscommunication with the Rotary Club. Um, they had thought they'd turned it in on time, um, so I think this is us trying to work with them. This money's kind of already been expended at this point, so. Um, but this is something we do, uh, generally sponsor every year. Uh, so it looks like they requested a thousand, but they're recommending we, uh, sponsor this for 500.
Okay. Any questions or discussion regarding the proposal for the Tourism Commission? Hearing none, we'll move this forward to the next council meeting. Number four, agreement with Devin Snodgrass for design services for renovations to City Hall.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an agreement with Devin to give us some concepts for renovating City Hall. Uh, we've worked into the budget some money for next year to do some interior renovations to City Hall, try to buy us a little bit more space. Um, we're tight in some of the suites and just looking to see where we can gain a little bit more office space. So Devin's gonna work up a few concepts for us to review, and when he's done, we'll take those to council for your consideration.
Very good. Any questions, concerns, comments? Nope. Any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, hearing none, we will move this forward. Number five, Task Order 20, Amendment Number One for Wabash Heights ARPA, um, excuse me, ARPA Grant.
So this is an agreement for the engineering changes. So the initial part of this was for about a hundred and some thousand dollars for the initial scoping, figure out really what we're gonna do out there, and this is the meat of that design, getting all that engineering completed out there for that project. You know, it's a five million dollar total project, and with a dollar max, so we're gonna have a dollar contribution, so that's, but we anticipated this amount of money coming through on that, so there's a lot of work to be going on, on the survey and getting all the detention ponds described and, and all the drainage work surveyed in, so.
What do you, uh, expect the, the timeframe to, this project to start to completion? What do you think?
Uh, I, I hope we can have it pulled together and maybe bid it out, probably be, probably be in first of the year, I would suspect.
Okay. Any other questions regarding, uh, number five? Hearing none, any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move it forward. Number six, a resolution authorizing a supplement to the Bartlet and West, Inc. Engineering Services Agreement for the Route E Sidewalk Project.
So you can see that's for 50, 100 dollars, and what that is, is somewhat, all the projects like we maybe discussed before have had to have cultural, uh, resource assessments completed on them, and so that money is for TriLeap, which is a third-party company that will be doing, completing the cultural resource assessments for that project.
Is that a new stipulation? Is that, this, this is the second time I've heard that. In South Moberly, we were dealing with that too, correct?
All of them, yeah. There's gonna be, come up. What has happened is they used to do those, I think, in- All of them, yeah. There's gonna be, come up. What has happened is they used to do those, I think internally, and so most times when you had disturbed roadways where there'd been sidewalks or drainage or roads or they'd been torn up for years, you know, you just, they were category exclusion because, you know, they've been disturbed. So, but now they've kicked that off to third-party engineer consulting firms to do that determination. So they're finding that they need them and now we're having to do, we're having to do them. They're not getting the category exclusions.
Very good.
I have a question. Do, have you ever had any pushback from any of the tribes on any cultural assessments that the city's been involved in recently?
I think that there were, in my understanding, there was one project where they had requested some additional information and it didn't come to me, but I, so I got this through our consultant who worked through Trileaf as in, I guess they had some requests for additional information, had to do a little more looking on one thing, but it never turned into anything. So I wouldn't say pushback, but.
Yeah. I know a lot of times that can really slow down projects in other communities, I've heard.
Any other questions for Mr. Sanders? Nope. Hearing none, any objections to moving that forward to the next council meeting?
Nope.
Okay, we will move that one forward. Number seven, acceptance of conveyance for parcel one on Highway twenty-four West for the city of Moberly. Who wants to take that one?
A few years back, we identified some areas when MoDOT had reduced down their mowing strategies and were not mowing several parcels and it looked kind of rough. And so I was looking into the excess right away along twenty-four and JJ and the underpass there and I was seeing if we could maybe try to acquire some of that and where we could either at least mow it and maintain it or attach it to somebody who could mow it as part of their property and keep it maintained. There were three pieces we were looking at. One of them came back, MoDOT doesn't actually own it. Another one they want to retain for drainage purposes, but this one's up on the hill by the railroad underpass, kind of in front of Midwest Custom Truck, basically, you know, right there, that big triangle. It's about three quarters of an acre, a quarter of an acre, a third of an acre. And they are, they agreed on that one, that, no, we don't need that, and so they are deeding that over to us this time, so. If we want to accept it, but it's something I think, you know, we could find something either commercially or residentially to develop there, and then that would keep that area mowed and maintain and looking better.
Sure thing. Good idea. Any objection to moving that forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move that one forward. Number eight, a resolution authorizing the Moberly Fire Chief to pursue and the city manager to execute automatic and or manual mutual aid agreements with designated Randolph County Rural Fire Districts.
You left it on. I'm not sure what you need me to say, but this is something that's been done in the past. This is just a follow-up and a kind of a refresh with different, over the years, people change, situations change. But for the most part, all this is, is it's on paper, it looks proper in ISO, especially the automatic aid. Do you actually get points for that? And then we have the right to refuse to go, you know, depending on what our situation is in town. So it's one of those where it's kind of like you wash your hands and I'll wash your hands and we'll pay back and all that kind of thing. It's just a, it's just a good common practice to have for the fire service.
Sure. Any questions for Chief regarding the agreement? One of the, one of the questions that I had that I'd asked him was, you know, just wanted to make sure that we weren't gonna become the fire station for Randolph County versus, versus just Moberly. And it might get abused, but I think he satisfied, satisfied those questions. And, and obviously, we've got to help our neighbors and they've got to help us. They've sometimes got some, some tools and utilities that we don't have and vice versa. So the reciprocity there, I think, I think is, is helpful, so.
Then knock on wood, we don't have that kind of a problem where we have to be asking for help all the time.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. Any additional questions? Any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting?
No.
Okay, we will move that forward. Number nine, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Locality Media, Inc., first due for their company's software program to be implemented by the fire department.
So this is a, basically an upgrade to our knifers reporting software. We've had some issues that I'm not comfortable with, with the current one. It's not that they're a bad company, it's just, it's an older design program. The first due situation is a lot more up to date, a lot more responsive right now. It seems to be more robust and it'll handle a lot more things. We're looking at issues and things that we're, we might actually be able to eliminate possible other software we're currently on in the future if, if things pan out like they look like they should. So there's an opportunity. It's a little more expensive upfront, but in the long run, it might end up saving us some more money down the road, so.
Is this the same software that you provide the reports for us in the packet? Is that the same software that?
No, no, no.
Or will it be doing that, I guess is the question?
I will be pulling some of the reports out of that, yes. I'm sorry, I guess probably the reports that you're reading on there is coming from the old one, and finding those sometimes is not easy.
Right.
Hopefully, this will be a lot more responsive, so.
Very good. Any questions for Chief regarding the new software? Any objections to moving that forward to the next council meeting? Hearing none, we will move that forward. And number ten's also you. Request for approving a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Professional Health Services, Inc. for onsite firefighter physicals.
Yeah, this is the annual physical firefighter physicals. We're meeting our contractual requirements with the union, and it's been a good thing. We are switching companies. We're, and the main reason for that is that this company can provide all the testing in one day, which does help eliminate the need for manual having to pay overtime for the individuals not on duty those days to come in. They were having to do that twice on the other one. Plus, this, this company is very comparable, it really looks at dollars to dollars. It's just overall, we think it's gonna be a better move for us.
Very good. Any questions for Chief regarding the physicals for the firefighters? Nope?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move that one forward as well. And the last one on the list, number eleven, authorization to apply for the twenty twenty-four State Homeland Security Grant application for the police department.
So we occasionally apply for these, sometimes two or three a year, depending on what the parameters are for the grant. This particular grant cycle, for this one, allows us to purchase equipment. One of the things that we're gonna try and purchase, and one that we don't have, is basically a ballistic blanket. We don't have one, we think there's a need for that, and this is something we like to apply for.
Very good. Any objections to applying for this grant for the police department?
Anybody have any questions? Why I didn't come for before we asked is that the timeframe, these are usually about two or three weeks at the most. So it requires us, once it opens, you have to get, you have to be on the ball. So we usually have to get approval electronically from the mayor, and that's where you have to come back and ask retroactively for permission to apply.
Which, which they did, and I appreciate it very much, so.
How much is the grant for?
It depends on what we purchase. Ballistic blankets run anywhere from two thousand to four thousand dollars, depending on size of the blanket and capabilities of that. Basically, we're looking at about twenty-five hundred dollars right now. The deeper that Officer Swan got into several of the specifics that we want for this, then they went looking for those specific parameters and actually got some cost around twenty-five hundred dollars or so, but it's not a set amount, and it's not our money. It is a reimbursement grant, so all of our purchasing stuff would apply because we have to purchase it, and then we'd be reimbursed one hundred percent. But we wouldn't do any buying until we actually got the grant notification from them.
From the Department of Public Safety?
I think this is coming through Mark Twain, but there's, it runs different grams. It comes from a homeland security, but it filters out through DPS, and sometimes it filters down again. I thought that this was coming through Mark Twain, Regional Council of Governments, but it could be one or both. And I can tell you for sure, but it's basically a homeland security grant that's filtered down to the local, local areas.
Any other questions for Chief Link? Any objections to moving this forward? Okay, we will move this forward to the next council meeting. That's all we have for this evening. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the current work session.
So moved.
A motion, we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.